Manager.
Good morning.
I see it's a little after nine o'clock. We might as well get started. Before we do, I'm going to pass this around. I just got it a few minutes ago. This is a lithograph that will be, that the committee will be selling for the USS Wichita. It has the USS Wichita that they're getting ready to commission in the foreground, LCS-13. In the background is the first USS Wichita from World War I era. The second one, other picture is the second USS Wichita that was fought in World War II, and also a little bit of history. So I thought you'd be interested. I just got that. It's kind of cool.
That is kind of cool. I'll buy one.
Good.
You don't know how much they are yet?
I'll probably still buy it. I've got a whole bunch of them in my office right now.
That's kind of neat.
Got a history of it.
It shows Cowtown, and it shows the history of our aircraft industry, too. Really a neat lithograph. Well, I hear we're going to learn about Census today.
We are. We have actually Tony Pitchford here from the US Census Bureau, and she's going to talk to us about the census, upcoming census.
Good morning. Welcome.
She is a data dissemination specialist from the data dissemination branch. So she will talk to us about the census.
So, good morning. I am Tony Pitchford, and I am your data dissemination specialist. I just acquired the state of Kansas. So I cover Arkansas, Missouri, Kansas. They gave me Iowa a couple of weeks ago, and I'm told I'm on standby for Louisiana. So please use me. If you don't, then I have to go to those other places, and Arkansas and Louisiana is a little bit farther down. So I spent five years in Arkansas, just moved back to the Chicago area. I've been with the Bureau for 24 years now. I've worked in several areas within the census. Forgive me, I feel like someone's choking me. I've worked in several areas, and I wanted to really come and talk to you as the county commissioners, as the leaders within the county, on several fronts. One, to let you know that I'm here to service you if you need data as you're looking at your planning for the county, when you're looking for doing things within the cities that you are living within, that work within the area. If you're looking to work with economic development, you're looking at bringing in new businesses, if you want to know some of the criterias that people are looking at, SBA, when the people are going to apply for loans from them. So I'm going to do this in a couple of areas. I want to first talk about census and what we do. A lot of people think that we are only here every 10 years, as mandated by the Constitution. True, however, we do surveys 365 days a year. When you hear about the unemployment rate every month, that's our current population survey. Any week on the night, with the 19th in it, in a month, we go out and collect the data so that the news area, labor statistics, can submit that information to the public on where we stand on unemployment. When you hear about the emergency room, the wait, have you ever seen some of those signs that have started coming out, "Emergency Room"? That's NAMZ's HAMZ's, National Embolatory Medical Care Survey, National Embolatory Hospital Care Survey. And I'm going to put a pin there. Ms. Jerry Wyatt is your representative from the census who goes out and does some of those surveys. So she's probably going to be calling on you, so I wanted you to see her over there. She kindly joined me today. But we go in and we talk to the doctors about a certain period of time. And yes, HIPAA is in place, however, as we're doing it for CDC, we're doing it to assist. We can bypass HIPAA. We go in and we look at what people come into a doctor's office to complain about. We look at what the doctor actually finds, and we look at what the doctor prescribes. That is what helped us to identify that tuberculosis was making a comeback. It's how we identified the bird flu. It's how we identified the heavy strain of the flu that we just, well, we didn't just experience, that we are experiencing right now, so that we can help the pharmaceutical companies to identify out, one, TB, you need to get busy on making the vaccine again; two, you need to find a vaccine to deal with this. This is happening in these areas within the country, and it's spreading. With the hospitals, we go into the emergency room. And I've worked some of these surveys. I literally did the hospital survey where I went into the emergency room, and I looked at how long it took from the time you see the triage nurse to the time you see the doctor. And the fact of the matter is, is that I, don't ask me why, I chose Cook County in Chicago. I literally saw people on beds in the hallway that had been there for over 24 hours after they saw the triage, still waiting for the nurse. So that kind of information we take. We identify out what they come in complaining about, whether they're admitted to the hospital, do they transition and never leave the hospital, or do they go home? And it helps us to identify what's happening with the health within our country. We have SIP, Survey of Income Program Participation. These are all the kinds of surveys. This helps us to identify what kind of federal programs or citywide, countywide programs that people are participating in. We have ACS, which took the place of the Long Form on the Decennial Census, which is the American Community Survey, which is the data that I'm going to show you today. It helps you to see the changes within the county prior to having to wait for the next 10 years. You don't have to wait 10 years anymore to see what the changes are within the county. We do these because that information helps the different areas within government to identify out what kind of money is needed where. I've done the private and public school survey. There is the teacher's survey. There's engineers, the college graduates. There is a multitude. We do the housing survey, the health surveys. And we are the statistical bureau for the country. We're the ones that if you're putting in a grant, it's our numbers that they're looking at in Washington and the Congress, and that's where the money is coming from. So a lot of times I've had organizations say, "I put in for a grant and I didn't get it." And I go, "Where did you get your data from?" And they go, "You know, well, we walked around the neighborhood and asked people." I'm like, "Hmm, okay. I have nothing to say about that. But if you had used the government numbers where they could identify and verify what you said with the numbers that they have, it might have made a difference." I'm not saying it will, but it might have. So I wanted to come to you, and I wanted to talk to you. Now, we also have the Decennial Census coming up, the 2020. With the 2020 census, one of my focuses that I put in my work plan for this year is the fact that I want to go into the counties, and I want to go where there has been a 20% or less response rate. The reason that's important to me is because I may not live in Kansas, although I used to live in Overland Park. Because I don't live here does not mean that I don't consider myself a part of the community. I represent Kansas now. So what am I, a Kansan? A Kansian? Okay, I'm a Kansian.
Jayhawk.
A Jayhawk. I'm a Jayhawk, okay. Don't tell my granddaughter. We just spent a lot of money getting her out of Illinois. But your numbers from the Decennial, from the 2020, is going to be the federal dollars that come into the county. And this is the money that you're going to have to work within, to get the programs you want, to do the services you want within the county. So for me, it's important, as a Jayhawk, to make sure we get the best money, the most amount of money that we can, because I promise you, if we don't get an accurate count, another state is going to take the money that should be coming here. They will get it. You may ask for a new school. People did not respond. So when you go to the Board of Education, or when you go to the Education Division, they're going to say to you, you're going to say, "I have a school, and the children are in a trailer behind the school, and we've got 600 students." And they're going to look at the numbers and say, "No, we see you have 150. You don't need a new school. You don't need any money for that." Your numbers are not there. So that's one of the things. Now, you're going to have a partnership specialist that's going to work directly with 2020, but I am yours 365 days a year. I'm the one that I'm hoping, when you have questions, you need answers, and you need data, you're going to let me train your staff, and you're going to let me show you and help you with that data to make sure you have the most updated information. I'm yours 364 days out of the year. I take Christmas off. I have great-grandchildren who'll be looking for Christmas gifts now. So Granny, Gigi, I'm sorry, not Granny, Gigi, has to be around on that day. When you look at the numbers, when you look at the different areas, I believe, Tony, it was 118 different areas, cities and townships, that encompass Cedric County. And I want to show you, Tony has been kind enough, he's going to print out some data for you. I simply pulled up some data on Bel Air, Derby, Valley Center, and Wichita. And I'm going to increase this. I don't know if you can see those numbers, but here, what this data that I pulled up here for you, your total population by male or female. It goes into the age group, starting with under the age of five. Okay, can't go past 150. And you can go from five to nine, all the way to 85 and older. And we're showing you the population. I'm showing you the population for each one of these cities. Median age, 18 and over to 65 and older, male, female, for 18 and over. And then we break it down by race. I know it's a touchy subject for the Hispanic community right now, but we have got to count within that community, and we've got to get them to understand that they need to participate because without it, they're living within our cities, they're using the facilities, the Department of Transportation is fixing the roads that we all drive on, and we need every dollar for every person, from the youngest person on April 1st at 12:01, just born, to the oldest person, and I always use the example of the mother-in-law in the basement behind the heater in the hole. You've got to count them all. You're laughing. You know, some of us have mother-in-laws that we'd like to do that, too. So it's, so we have, I'm just saying, I've seen some. I am what you see, y'all. I'm just everyday person. Please forgive me if I, black, white, American, Native Hawaiian, Hispanic population, voting age population, both male and female. This is data that's available to you. But this is not the only information. I can give you income and poverty within the areas. I can go in and show you what the poverty rate is within an area. I can show you what the average income is within an area. And if you're talking about doing something with your economic development, I do a lot of work with SBA. And with that, I have the opportunity to work with what we call the New Business Builder. It's a new website we have. So let's just say someone is interested in housing and construction. I can go in and I can show how many companies are doing that kind of business. I can show what their average income is, what do they pay their employees. I can show you what the consumer spending in an area is, what do they spend on breakfast, lunch, or dinner? How much do they spend on housing improvements? How much do they spend on healthcare? How much do they spend, and you can thank Budweiser, how much do they spend on alcoholic beverages? And we're still looking for data that you're interested in. So if you go on that site and you don't see it, then you should let us know. And I said that I thank Budweiser for that, not because I drink, y'all, but because they identified that they couldn't identify the numbers for 21 and over for their business plan when they're trying to sell their product. So the persons and headquarters decided they should do that. And yet they ignored me when I asked about the coffee shops. That's okay. If I go into poverty, I can show you food stamps, which is SNAP, heating and cooling assistance, or just poverty. That little box right here, it pulls it over. On the bottom, for these four cities that I chose, and I could take that out. I can do it simply by Cedric County. I can do it by all of the townships within the county. We can do it by the state. But right now, there are 699 different data sets available to find that information. When you see the star next to a data set, that means that this is the most used data. This is what people are looking at. But I am constantly going into the 2016 American Community Survey data because this is the most updated information that we have for your area. So I'm just going to do poverty status in the last 12 months. For Bel Air, below poverty is estimated to be 378 persons, which is a 5.2 percentage. Now, I want to point out that we always do the margin of error because our data is covering from 2012 to 2016. So there is a margin of error. But when I do it, and when I go into it, I always download it into an Excel. So when you're putting your reports and things together, you can take that margin of error out if you want to. You can move that Excel file as you want. But on the left-hand side, you see, we go from 2012, I can give you the data from 2012 to 2016, so you can do comparisons and to see where the communities are. In Derby, you're looking at a 6.9 percentage. Let's see, Valley, 7.5. We can pull the information that you want, and I'd really like it if you asked me to identify some information that you might be working on right now, that you're interested in. If you look at the, how about income? How much money is being made within the communities? So, and I'd like to come back and train your staff on how to use this. I'd like to train the staff on how to pull this data together. So when you're looking at your budgets, you may want something that someone didn't have all the numbers for. You can just say, "Okay, go get that number." But of course, you can always text me, email me, or call me, and I'll give you my cards, where you can take a look, and I can help you with that data. But I also like to make sure that I train you because I trained someone in the area because if I'm on a plane, I'm on the road, I'm not going to be able to get back to you as soon as you may need it. So it's always good that staff has the ability to pull this data. So I pulled up income earnings for individuals. 783 files, data sets are available. And I still have anybody interested in any other city other than the ones I have? Employment status comes up first. So you can see the population of 16 and over, if they're in the labor force, if they're unemployed, if they're armed forces, civilian, families. You can see the poverty status. So in the labor force, we're looking at a, this can't be right. Do I have the right? 70% poverty status? I simply do not believe that. Income and earnings, okay. I got scared, y'all. I was about to have to go back and redo my profile for the year all over again. So in Bel Air. I can give you the occupations, industries, class of worker, income and benefits. Bel Air, less than $10,000, 156 people. In Derby, less than 10,388. In Bel Air, 200,000 or more, 127 individuals, 410 in Derby, 138 in Valley Center. So this is data that is useful, and I don't read all of it because you don't need me to read all of this for you. But I wanted to show you, I wanted to give you an example of the kind of data that we do have available that will assist while you're planning, for all of the planning that goes on. And if I can, I want, because I don't want to overstay my time, I want to go back and I want to show you, I talked about, I talked about the Business Builder. That's our page. If you go into Data, Data Tools and Apps, Business Builder. And this is just something that I think would be helpful when you're looking at economic development, when you're looking at bringing in new businesses. So you can identify out, on this side, on the left-hand side of the screen, are we talking construction? I don't know if you do food trucks here. How about healthcare, retail, professional, business services? I'm going to do construction because there's a lot of construction going on here. So if you see, I'm just going to do home construction. In the United States, you can see the number. But here, I'm going to identify out. Once you start typing, you should get a drop-down box, and I'm going to, on the map. This is going to provide you a map for an overview. And I need to pull this down. Let's see, let me go back to 100 so I can show you. Will you see it outlined? This is Wichita County. So I'm going to. With this, you can see that within Cedric County, median household income, 51,000. 89% are high school graduates with, or degrees that are higher. 63.7% are homeowners. That's the homeownership rate within the county. And there are 213 employer establishments.
What's an employer establishment?
Well, you see the color code. That's your population for these. So here, we're looking at between 35 and 508. But I want to create a report for you because I want you to see what I was talking about. Please feel free to stop me. I know that I'm jumping all over the place, but I want to give you an idea of what is available. I want you to see what kind of data we do have. So here, here's the potential customers. Let's say that you're a construction person, you're a builder of houses. So you see that for the county, 508,000. Who's going to buy a house? Let's just say percentage of 21 and over, 69.6%. You can see by race. Over here, you have the graph. If you continue, here's your median household income, high school degree or higher, your bachelor's degree. You can see the percent population 16 and older in the labor force, with health coverage, disabled, 11.7%. Born, born, 8.6%. Speaking Spanish at home, 9.2. How about we look at the housing? So owner-occupied housing, you have 123,500-plus who are homeowners. This information is available for you. This is your homeownership rate. On the right-hand side, between 2007 and '11, you can see that we're looking at 66.6%. Whereas 2012 to 2016, it's at 63.7. Your business summary, home construction. You see the employer establishments, average payroll per employee, 37,000. Approximately 2,378 individuals per business. So that's, that's an estimate. The revenue brought in is not identified. If you see NA on any of our reports, that data is not available for publish. Non-employer businesses, 645. And the workforce, 158 all higher. And this is beginning of the quarter, 940. Separation, firm job loss, monthly earnings, and consumer spending for Cedric County. Per household, approximately 59,646, of which on, I am going to come up off that alcohol consumption. How about women's apparel? It says $611. Ladies, we know that's not true, but we'll let them think that. Households, children's apparel, 301. How about household footwear, 386. Dining out, food away from home, $2,800. Let's see, household on education, $1,200. Entertainment, recreation, $2,600. Pet food, $206. Dating services, a dollar. No problem with dating here, huh? How about food consumed at home? Over $4,500. Household on, expenditures on household on housing, $18,000 a year, average. If you look at utilities, phone services, water, insurance, life and other insurance, an average of 365. Pension, social security, hair care, personal care, local transportation, travel, airline fees. This data is available, and it can be such a resource for individuals in your area that are looking to start a business. And this is the data that, that they would want to put into a SBA loan package. This is the information that they would want to utilize if it's a 501(c)(3). This is the kind of data if they're looking for grants. So it's something that I'm hoping that will be useful to you. I've jumped all over the place. It's already 9:30. I don't want to be escorted out. And I will tell you something a little funny. It was not embarrassing then, but you know, when I think about it, it probably is a little embarrassing, but I'm going to tell you anyway. I was in a church, and I was sitting in the second row from the front. Now, who sits in the front of the church when you're visiting a church? And the minister was speaking, and he said something, and it wasn't correct, it was not what was said. And I said, "That's not right." He looked around, and he said something else, and I said, "That's not right." So he finally said, "Who said that?" Well, I'm sitting in his house, and I said, he said, "Deacons escort her out." And out the door. So I don't want to be escorted out of here, okay? So it's, but I ask you to please use me. I am yours. I'm free. You need training on this. You need people to see this. You need your community residents when you go back and do your town meetings. If you need this, please utilize me. My schedule flexes, so we can always set up a schedule. I like coming here. I want to see what Kansas is all about, and I want to be good for you. I want to be of service to you. So I have my cards, and I'm going to leave them. I urge you to work with Ms. Jerry when she's around. She's going to be in your counties. She's going to be coming out. So you can tell the police chief commissioners, "Don't arrest her. I'm kind of short on bail." So, but she is the one that helps us to gather the information. I'm your dissemination specialist, and I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. Do we have any questions?
Any questions for me? Any questions for me?
If I want to know how big a city was currently today, rather than with the last census, do you have that information?
Mm-hmm, in regards to population?
Uh-huh.
Sure. What city?
Goddard.
G-O-D-D-A-R-D?
Uh-huh.
Two things I can do. I can do community facts, which is going to give us a quick view. In 2010, it was 4,314... I'm sorry, 44. Okay. They're getting ready to release 2017, but they haven't yet. Right now, it's at 4,224.
But that was 2010.
No, this is 2016.
2016, okay.
So, if you do the drop-down box right here, you can get the 2010 population, which was 4,300, and the 2016, which is 42. You can also go down and you can see, if you go on the left-hand side, the average age is 31.7. 92, 90.2% have a high school degree. You have 1,385 housing units. Median income, 60,500. 8.5 poverty rate. 147 veterans. If you wanted to do a report, you can do everything right there and just have that printed out.
Very good. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Any questions from anyone in the room? I appreciate it. I'm sure planning will be interested in this. Public works, finance, a bunch of folks in the room will be interested in the data.
Wonderful. We also do geography, but again, I'm not going to get escorted out of here today. Thank you so much. Have a blessed day.
Appreciate it. Mr. Manager, what else you have for us today?
Uh, the second thing is I'll have Lindsay talk about the bond sale today and go over that schedule.
So, Missures, can I talk this morning? We will have the bond sales. We're looking forward to it. It'll occur in the finance conference room and another day before they're... We'll plan to put in information at this point. We don't know what it's going to look like. But we'll open those bids back in January. We'll authorize the resolution. The chairman could award the bond sale if certain parameters were met. And so, assuming that that happens, we'll ask the chairman to come up about 10:15, which manager reviewed with us, did authorize that sale at 11:00. We'll come down to your commission meeting and ask you to ratify that and adopt a bond resolution. We'll have our municipal advisor and our bond counsel to walk us through the details. Now, if, we know the market's been kind of crazy lately and so those interest rates are ticking up and so there's some uncertainty about whether that 2.75% cap will be exceeded. We don't expect it to be exceeded by much, but it could be. And if that happens, then the chairman can't authorize the bond sale. So, in that case, at 11 o'clock, we can bring it to actually award the sale and do the bond resolution. In either case, we'd have to have a meeting. But it just depends on what the action is. Do you have motion that you're... And I'd like to... And then obviously, you're seeing from what we've been through at that time. So, that's...
Good. And we can earmark that money once we sell the bonds?
Yes. Once we do that money, which will be toward the end of March, then we can talk about if there's an agenda item we'd like us to come with to mark how we... We'll see that, like, or have it aside.
Okay. Well, I want to make sure that we earmark it for something that we would bond, like admin building or something like that. So, but we will do that the end of March then? The earmark?
That's what I would recommend. We get the proceeds and then we actually have...
So, after we approve the bonds, then how long for the money is there?
The end of March.
Yeah, that's also the end of March.
Probably, I would say, three to four weeks before the month starts to be by accounting. Unless we get all the paperwork.
So, that's why we wait till the end of March to earmark it?
Right.
Okay.
But this money is replacing or refunding previously expended funds.
Right. So, we, we will authorize transfers out of the general fund and the capital improvement fund. If they've got a real building, so it's definitely reimbursed in the general fund for those, for those cash transfers. And you technically can apply the refund.
Any other questions? What else you got for us?
Third topic is, next BOCC meeting is not until March 14th. Next week, we won't have a staff meeting or a BOCC meeting because there'll be a few of us at the NACO conference. So, just with that, it'll be a couple of weeks before we have the next one. If you look at your note cards, we already have quite a few, quite a few agenda items already for that March 14th meeting. So, that's all I have.
Very good. Okay. Missures, you have anything? Mr. Ranton? Mr. Runner?
No.
Mr. Wodong?
No, sir.
Hey, the electeds have anything in the room? Sheriff, nothing? Very good.
Just a matter of interest. Ran across this yesterday. This is in the city of Indianapolis. It's red and green dots. They have a pothole hotline.
That's where the potholes are?
Red dots are ones that are still there, holes. The green dots are ones that have been fixed. 8,000 potholes. And they are, they have spent $150,000 in three days patching, just fixing potholes. And they're going to take every bit of their rainy day fund, $13 million, and start fixing just strips of the road, not the whole road. And then, their budget next year is $88 million. I don't know if all that's going to be spent on roads, but just a matter of information. When you, when you don't have preventive maintenance, that's what happens. FYSS.
Well, the county, the roads I drive on in the county are very good. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.